We'll call the March fourth, the Cookville City Council to order to protect the health, safety and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 pandemic authorized by the Governor's Executive Order Number Seventy-Eight. This meeting of the Cookville City Council will be conducted as a hybrid via in-person and by electronic means. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Lawman?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Shelton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
I present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to stand for the indication given out by Mark Davis, Stone Association of Baptists, followed by Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag. Would you pray with me?
Our Father and our God, we are thankful for the beautiful day that you've given to us today. And Lord, we're thankful for the land in which we live. We're thankful, God, for the government which you've given to us. And thank you that you've sustained each of these in their leadership positions. God, we're thankful that you give them wisdom to make the hard decisions that they need to make for the community. And God, as they serve this, this city, we pray that you would continue to give them wisdom through all of the things that they must decide. We pray that you would give them patience, that you would give them honor, and as they give you glory, for all the things that they're able to do for you and for the people. God, we pray your special grace on this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Item three, consider approval of agendas presented. Are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amend the agenda to remove item seven, seven K for a revolution that I, that I added during the private work session Monday. The motion to, motion to remove approval agenda minus seven K. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah.
Mayor Shelton?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Wheat? Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. For A, consider appointment to the Cookville Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Following twenty-one years of service, Mr. Sid Gilbreth submitted his resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals served three-year terms and are appointed by the City Council. The current term of Mr. Gilbreth is set to expire on January first, 2023. Mr. Michael Detwiler has been contacted and agreed to serve as appointed. The planning department recommends for the appointment of Mr. Detwiler to serve the remaining term, the remainder of the unexpired term.
Mr. Detwiler.
Send it.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Under four B, a proclamation of appreciation of Mr. John Ward. Give a little background and then I will.
Well, weeks ago, up before the start of the work day, a Mr. Ward came in and one of our receptionists out front was suffering a choking event. She had got some food bombs in her throat. One of the other ladies up front had been trying to get it dislodged. Mr. Ward sprang into action when he came into work, and I'm very proud of him, let me tell you. She was starting purple, and of course, you know, whenever you see something like that, you get a little nervous. Mr. Ward steps up, performed the Heimlich maneuver, and I, you know, she, I don't know if he saved her life, but if it'd gone much longer, it definitely was a life-saving event. But I, we're really proud of him and so I'd ask for the recognition. Thank you, Mayor.
We just proclamation. Whereas on Friday, February nineteenth at City Hall, a City Hall employee suffered from a choking incident before the work day officially began. And whereas planning director John Ward entered the building to find his fellow employee in need of assistance, boldly springing into action. And whereas John administered the Heimlich maneuver to the affected employee, his quick thinking and action to aid ultimately prevent a coworker from possibly choking to death. And whereas Mr. Ward's courageous efforts and timely action is worthy of merit and knowledge. Members of the Cookville City Council do hereby proclaim a profound sense of appreciation to Jonathan Ward for his exemplary service to others, dedication to community by learning and utilizing life-saving skills to provide aid to a fellow employee during a dire and frightening choking situation, and do find it fitting to honor Mr. Ward for his heroic actions this fourth day of March, 2021. Thank you, sir. We'll have this for you afterwards, okay? Very good. Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on February eighteenth. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, six A, consider awarding bid for semi-annual paving, asphalt mix and milling for the Public Works Department. Six B, set a date four fifteen twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero three oh four, amendments to the official street map. Six C, set a date four fifteen twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero three oh five, amendment to the future land use concept plan of the Cookville twenty thirty plan that depicts an area located along West Broad Street in the vicinity of County Farm Road and Royal Drive from being classified as appropriate for lower density residential to being appropriate for local commercial. Six D, set a date four fifteen twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero three oh six, resounding sixteen twenty-nine, sixteen thirty-nine, sixteen eighty-one, sixteen ninety-one, seventeen oh three, seventeen twenty-seven, seventeen twenty-nine, seventeen forty-three, seventeen seventy-one, and seventeen ninety-seven West Broad Street, and ten Royal Oak Drive from R S twenty single family residential to C L local commercial. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Send it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've got something. On, on the paving bid, I need to abstain for an indirect conflict of interest.
All right. So they're all being considered together, so we'll just roll call on the entire so.
You can pull out just that one.
All right. We'll, we'll consider six, at this first one, we'll do six A, six C, and six D. No, I'm sorry. Six B, C, and D will be the first one. We'll do six B, C, and D. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker? Five yes, motion carries.
All right. And now we'll consider six A of the semi-annual paving, asphalt mix and milling. A roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman? Councilman Miller?
Abstain.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under new business, seven A, hold public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance oh two one zero two oh three, amending municipal code of the city of Cookville Title fifteen, motor vehicles, traffic and parking. Chief Evans.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance essentially will amend the current section by deleting chapter fifteen, section one oh seven, which is the window tent. The reason we're deleting that section is because it will be contained in the, the following section, which we're asking to adopt. The Tennessee Code annotated fifty-five, fifty-five, chapter nine in its entirety. The reason for this is what we have learned is some, a few years ago, we adopted chapter eight, so officers would write a citation based upon that chapter. They may see a violation in chapter, that was in chapter nine, they would have to take, take the state court. That meant the offender and the officer would have two different courts. This would just give us the ability to hear both of those cases in, in city court. I'd recommend your approval. All right. This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing portion. Does anyone like to speak about this matter?
We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval to purchase one police pursuit vehicle. Chief Evans.
Mayor Council, unfortunately, we told one of our police cruisers a few weeks ago. So I'm asking to purchase a Ford Explorer on the statewide contract. The cost of the vehicle is thirty-three thousand three thirty-seven. We do have an insurance settlement for twenty-five thousand five ninety-four cents, which will leave us, by the time we reinstall the equipment, about eighty, eighty-seven hundred dollars that we'll have to absorb in our current budget. Recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker? Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider resolution R two one zero three oh five to urge the General Assembly to oppose H B three sixty-six. John Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. House Bill three sixty-six is currently active in the Tennessee, in the Tennessee General Assembly. The bill has been proposed unsuccessfully since two thousand seventeen and has been introduced again for the two thousand twenty-one Tennessee Legislative Session. As introduced, the bill prohibits government entities from acquiring right-of-way dedications from landowners when property along existing public right-of-ways is subdivided. Cities and counties require the dedication of right-of-way from developers when they subdivide property along existing streets that do not have enough right-of-way to accommodate street widening, upgrading of utilities, installation of sidewalks, and stormwater improvements. The dedication is generally, generally only required when the existing city street does not have adequate right-of-way. The adequacy of the right-of-way is based on the local government's major street plan, street construction standards, and the existing street classification. Developments on one side of the street are generally, generally required to dedicate half the width of the right-of-way as measured from the center line of the existing street. The basic principle behind the dedication requirement is that the developer, in increasing the density along an existing street, is contributing to the need for improvements, and should at minimum dedicate property to accommodate those improvements instead of the taxpayer paying the entire cost. When a developer constructs new streets in a subdivision, the developer is required to dedicate right-of-way for the street. When a developer subdivides off an existing street, the development costs are greatly reduced, with the streets and often utilities have already been installed at the expense of the city and/or another developer. The city of Cookville holds the developer harmless in the case of dedication when the dedication creates noncompliance with setbacks, minimum lot sizes, or other applicable zoning code requirements. The developer is allowed to develop the property at the same density, the number of units or lots, as the property was entitled to, prior to the dedication. Additionally, any perceived impact from the loss of property value in right-of-way dedication is passed on to the purchasers of the new lots, units, the same as when a developer actually constructs a new street. The inability to require the dedication of property for right-of-way prior to the subdivision of property on the existing city street not only passes the cost of the right-of-way on to the taxpayer, but potentially increases the cost of the purchase where improvements have occurred within the area of the future right-of-way. The Tennessee Municipal League, Tennessee Highway Officials Association, Tennessee County Services Association, Association of County Mayors, and Tennessee County Commissioners Association all oppose this bill. The planning department asked the City Council to approve resolution R two one oh three oh five, and strongly, strongly urging the Tennessee General, General Assembly to oppose this legislation. At our work session on Monday, we had asked what the county, Putnam County's positions on, on the bill was. I spoke with the road supervisor, Mr. Randy Jones today, and he has asked County Mayor Porter to present a resolution to the county commission at their March meeting. That's what I was informed by him. I respectfully asked the council to consider this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I've got a question. John, just kind of understand this a little better, because it can get complicated. As a homeowner here in Cookville, does, you know, this bill were to pass, or if this bill was not to pass, rather, do, does it affect me as a property owner if I don't develop my property? Is the city, does it give the city any rights or anything to take property from me?
No, absolutely not. The only, the only time right-of-way dedication is required is when you were developing property.
Okay.
And you're creating new lots, you're subdividing the property, you're increasing the density. That's why the requirement, that's why we have the requirement in our regulations.
Okay. And then if, if, but it could affect me if this bill were to pass, because my understanding is that the city would then have to raise tax dollars to pay for these rights away that they're, they're being given to by the developers.
Yeah. But once again, the, the cost associated with acquiring this right-of-way if street improvements are necessary in the future because of increased densities and things like that would be passed on to the city and the taxpayers.
Okay. And then a, a, one more quick question here. Does the developer have any cost associated with this bill not being passed? Do we charge the developer anything for that right-of-way, or did they have any cost? Or did they lose any density?
That's a key point from the city of Cookville's policies.
We should really, we have a, we need to get it on the table to discuss it honestly.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's why, and you made a motion.
I made a motion.
Now, we set somebody second it, and then we'll finish our, that's how we.
Sorry, Mayor. I'll second that.
Okay. Now, I just want to make sure we're doing it right. I mean, Robert's rules.
Yeah.
So now, answer it. He's happy to answer. Go ahead.
As I was saying there, it's actually stipulated in the zoning ordinance for the city that the developers are held harmless if any property is acquired for public purpose, and that's what this would be an example of, is right-of-way dedication is acquiring property for public purpose.
Yeah. So it's, so I understand that fully. If I'm a developer and I've got a, a large track of land that I'm wanting to do multiple lots in, you know, it's not going to reduce the amount of homes I can build in there or anything else. You still give the developer the same amount of density for that lot.
That's correct.
Under the existing rule. The only difference would be is that the tax, well, the city, funded by the taxpayer, would then pay the developer, landowner, for that right-of-way.
It's when they are creating increases in density, and you know, they're creating the need for the improvements. Yes, that's correct. We would have to pay for that.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Comments? From council? Okay. Y'all yours answered? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider resolution R two one zero three oh six, authorizing the major apply to the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development for community development block grant funds. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. The city of Cookville is eligible to apply for community development block grants, C D B G funds, through the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. The planning department, on behalf of the Water Quality Control Department, is requesting council approval to apply for the grant to undertake a sewer rehabilitation project in the West End area. The purpose of the project is to eliminate overflows by installing approximately four thousand one hundred feet of pipes and existing vitrified clay pipes and concrete pipe sewer lines, replacing approximately forty-four laterals, rehabilitating twenty-three manholes, and replacing the existing pump station. The proposed improvements will eliminate the risk of environmental impacts of sewage overflows that are hazardous, hazardous to human health and water quality. With council approval, the city of Cookville applied for C D B G funds in two thousand twenty, and our application was very close to being funded. With guidance from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Staff, the city of Cookville is proposing to increase the local match or additional points on the grant application. The maximum grant award is six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and Cookville's match is no less than fifteen percent of the grant amount. The estimated cost of the project is seven hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars, with one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred being the city of Cookville's local match. The grant application requires that a resolution be approved by the City Council agreeing to pay this required match. So I respectfully ask the council to pass this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
There's a second. Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider awarding bid for the city drive-through addition customer service department assembly.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members. We recently advertised for bids for the equipment and installation necessary to add a second service lane to the drive-through located on the west side of our building here. We received two quotes, and this evening we are recommending Bank Pack as the lowest bid meeting specifications for a total of eighteen thousand three sixty-nine oh five, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
I have one. Is it going to be right at the drive-through? It divides into two right there?
Yes. Yes. It'll be like, like you see at a bank.
Sure.
There'll be a unit there and a tubing system that sends it into the, into the building, so.
So there's enough current space.
And the canopy is, yeah.
You're going to lose all the parking along that side to queue the cars? Okay.
Yeah. And we'll work on where we can move the handicap parking spot there. But the canopy itself is plenty wide enough that we can add that second lane.
What is this?
Feed bed.
Okay. Questions? All right. So we, we already motioned.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven F, consider approval of contract with Wiser Consultants for C E I services for multimodal sidewalk project on East Spring Street, Public Works, Great Brown.
Mayor and Council, we anticipate being able to bid sidewalk project on East Spring Street this spring. We recently advertised for qualification for C E I services for this job. We chose Wiser Consultants and negotiated a contract amount in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and seventy-dollar thirty-four cents. That's not to exceed amount. I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Seven G, approval to purchase front load sanitation truck utilizing a soil swell, purchasing cooperative, Public Works, Great Brown.
Mayor and Council, during putting together the budget for the next fiscal year, some of our sanitation truck suppliers have told us we would have a significant price increase later in the year. So we looked at a soil swell to see if there was any trucks available now. We did found one front-load truck that is available. It's on a lot right now that we can get. We feel it to be a significant savings to buy this now instead of waiting if the council would approve a truck in the next budget. This is not a budgeted item. We would, the money would come from our reserves, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Seven H, consider approval to purchase sixteen sets of turnout gear for the fire department utilizing the N P P gov cooperative purchasing program, Chief Blair.
Mayor and Council members, we will question the purchase sixteen sets of turnout gear utilizing the N P P gov cooperative program at the price of thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. This is a budget item and meets our specifications for the safety of our personnel. We would respectfully request your approval for funding, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
I consider awarding bid for one pole trailer for the electric department, Carl Haynes.
Mayor and council members, this is a piece of equipment that's used to transport our larger utility poles, and it will be replacing an aging unit that we have now. This is a budget item, and I request your approval of utility equipment for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker? Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven J, consider awarding semi-annual mineral aggregate bid for Public Works, Great Brown.
Mayor and Council, we recently advertised and received bids for our semi-annual mineral aggregate bid. I would recommend approval to the lower bidder meeting specs on each items. I would also recommend approval of the upper cobble of materials bid on two-inch rock, clean riprap, and shotrock, on the condition that U C materials processed with the aggregate outside the city limits, so that they will not be violating our zoning code pertaining to quarries. We will monitor their processes as best we can and reserve the right to cancel this contract if we find they are processing material within the city limits in violation of the zoning ordinance. I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Abstain.
Mayor Shelton? Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Four yes, motion carries.
Seven L, consider canceling the two thousand twenty-one regularly scheduled city council meeting, Mr. Mills.
Mayor and Council members, um, discussions with some of the council, at least three will be out of town or possibly out of town during spring break. So, and I've consulted with the directors, and there's no business pressing for the spring break week of the council meeting. I would respectfully request that we cancel the second one.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Send it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lawman?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheat?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end. Citizens that'd like to address the council, may I, anyone? All right. Any comments from the council? Yes, sir.
Yes. I'd like to do two things. One is the Leisure Service Department is doing a, a survey, and I'd like to publicize that and try to get it in the paper. And Mr. Mills, if you remember, the website that you go to, there's anyone here. I don't see Mr. Woods.
No, I don't remember. I have, we are publicized now. It's on the city's first book page. I think Mayor Shelton has posted on his first book page. You guys can release it all, but we will get that out. I'll give it to, to friends and friends.
I, I think we need to get all the citizens involved in doing the survey to find out what they want, you know? And if we can get all the publicity possible to, so people can express their preferences for things they want, I think that'd be a great thing. So that was the first thing. The second thing is, I went to a very moving memorial service yesterday on Hensley Drive out in McAllen commemorating the, the victims of the tornado that occurred a year ago yesterday. And I heard moving speeches from Mayor Porter and Mayor Shelton. The solemn solemnity of the situation really moved me, and I think a lot of people were there. And we went through a lot of terrible things, and nineteen lives were lost around here. And so, but it's the worst thing that I can think of that's ever happened to Putnam County. So it was just a moving experience. And, and Mayor Porter
So it was just a moving experience and, and Mayor Porter and Mayor Shelton, all their talks.
One tree giveaway, I was asked to read this. Due to the deforestation caused by the March 3rd, 2020 tornado, the Arbor Day Foundation, in partnership with the city of Cookeville and Verizon, will be giving away 500 containerized trees. The tree giveaway will take place March 13th at the Public Works Department parking lot, 1115 East Spring Street.